Always a good morning. Good set. You're ready to go, Mark. We're good with that. First off, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining. You should have noticed on the screen that the recording isn't caught and progress. The first thing is a roll call. If you would present that, please.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Commissioner Benton. Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Garminia.
Present.
Commissioner Keong.
Present.
Chair Strather.
Present.
And you have seven.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, the meeting is in order. And first thing of order of business is the approval of minutes from our last meeting, which was held on July 12th at Forest Park. Will accept a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, Commissioner Bradley.
Second. Clark Hubbard.
Moved by Commissioner Bradley, seconded by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Call for roll for approval. Vote.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Abstain.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Garminia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keong.
I'm sorry. I apologize if I should just abstain. I don't think I received a copy of the minute.
Abstain works.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
And the motion passes with five ayes and two abstentions.
Very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate the commissioners. We are on a short agenda today, which was very pleasant. The one thing we do have is a public hearing. So we'll first have the presentation by the staff on thirty dash twenty-three R A Z. The first part of that, if you're here to make public statements, please be sure to sign in the chat, place your name and the organization you're with at the appropriate time. We'll then we'll then recognize you if you're for a public hearing. Place your name in the in the chat area with your organization and we'll call at the appropriate time with that. Maryam Stanton at the podium, so we'll let her start off with this agenda item.
Great. Well, good evening all, Chair and members of the Commission. So the first item, as the Chair mentioned, next slide, please, is a rezoning request or petition for the parcel at sixty-one ten Berthold Avenue. And so this item includes a presentation by staff. We also have the petitioner here with us this evening. And they'll provide a brief presentation about their plans and also a public hearing this evening for a vote on on the question. Next slide. So here you can see the subject property outlined in blue in the Clayton Tam neighborhood. This is just about a tenth of an acre in size. And the petitioner is Mr. Ryan Hergit with the consent of the current property owner. I believe the petitioner is under contract to purchase the property as well as the adjacent property. The request is to rezone the parcel from a single-family dwelling district to U F neighborhood commercial district. The subject property in blue is currently an unused parking lot, which used to serve as part of the larger parking lot, as you can see, that was used for Telenia's restaurant, which is now the vacant building on Hampton Avenue that you see in that image. So it appears, looking at historical imagery of the site, that the parking lot has actually been there since at least the mid nineteen nineties. That's as far as back as I could go to see, though we don't believe it was ever permitted officially to be there, but it has been in that use for many years. The petitioner seeks to consolidate this parcel in blue with the adjacent property. See the proposed consolidation outlined in pink. And then demolish the former Telenia's restaurants and construct a comprehensive marijuana dispensary at this location. Next slide. So here's a map just to show the property's location in a little bit of a broader context. It's about a fifth of a mile south from Interstate sixty-four forty and right at the hinge between the Clayton Tam and Sheltonham neighborhoods. And Berthold Avenue, just as a point of context, is one of few streets in this segment of Hampton between the two interstates that has a signalized intersection and a crossing between the two neighborhoods. You know, as you know, Hampton Avenue at this location does carry a lot of traffic and is a busy street. Next slide. As you can see, it's currently zoned single-family despite its its use as part of the commercial property next door. The proposed rezoning to F would allow the property to be used for a range of commercial purposes, not currently allowed in A. So the F neighborhood commercial district in our code is kind of the least intensive commercial district, if you will, in our code. So you can see that many of the uses, including the dispensary, would not be allowed as of right, but would require a conditional use permit in order to be approved. So but you can see the range of kind of a sampling of uses that would be permitted if this property were zoned as F rather than A as it is currently. Next slide. When we look at the strategic land use plan, we see that the property falls largely within a neighborhood preservation area, but also a bit within neighborhood commercial area. And the neighborhood commercial area is supportive of the uses that would be made possible through a rezoning to F. And even the corner commercial notion within the neighborhood preservation area designation would also be supportive of the of the rezoning. So you can see kind of my emphasis added just for readability. Some of the elements of both the neighborhood commercial area designation and neighborhood preservation area intent that relate to this this request. In the neighborhood preservation area, the yellow designation at the bottom of the screen, you can see that that does strongly reinforce the importance of future development being integrated with the neighborhood and the surrounding context, even in the case of a corner commercial use. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the petitioner's proposed use would not be permitted as of right, but would require a conditional use permit. And this process includes an application and public hearing before consideration by the Board of Public Service. And this is kind of summarized in the resolution, but I just want to note here that by ordinance, P D A you may submit a letter with findings and recommendations for consideration in this process. And so just kind of raising that for the Commission's consideration as we move toward discussion. Next slide. Also in our code, and this was actually part of a text amendment recommended by the Planning Commission in in January of this year. You can see that there are actually site requirements for dispensaries and actually for all marijuana uses in our code. So what what is here is not a verbatim list of those site requirements, though those are included in the resolution. But this is a summary of what's required for all marijuana facilities. You can see various requirements related to security and monitoring, so a camera system, security guard, fireproof vault, and so on. No marijuana use on the site and also some exterior lighting requirements for the parking lot and otherwise. And then for marijuana dispenser uses specifically, whether medical or comprehensive, there are additional site requirements, some of which is, you know, specifying no consumption of marijuana in cars and then also limited hours of operation. So it could be open no earlier than eight a.m. in the morning and close no later than eight P M. in the evening. And as the resolution kind of hints at or sort of opens a conversation about, we would consider submitting a letter in this case to reinforce the importance of kind of site plan elements that relate to that neighborhood preservation area designation. So, you know, that would help make the development integrated with the neighborhood and also just with the the site designer site plan itself, improve the pedestrian realm along this heavily trafficked commercial corridor. Next slide. So, you know, here's just a list of topics that we've internally brainstormed just here for Commission discussion. So, you know, thinking about enhanced screening between a commercial use and the neighboring residential property, consideration of lighting impacts, building placement closer to Hampton, maybe at the corner of Hampton and Berthold, and so on, just all for discussion here. Next slide. So before closing my presentation, I just want to give a brief tour of the site. You can see in the top image here, a picture of looking south head on at the subject property, which is just this kind of narrow piece of the parking lot adjacent to the residential use to the west or kind of to the right in this image. The bottom, you can see a picture of the former Telenia's restaurant building on the property against Hampton. So this is looking southeast at that property. Next slide. This is a view kind of south down Hampton at the top. So you can see the BP gas station to the left, the former Telenia's building on the right, and just a little bit of the the character on Hampton. It's a wide street, and like I mentioned, it kind of is this, you know, very short connection between sixty-four forty and Interstate forty-four carries a good amount of traffic. On the bottom image, you can see a little bit of the character of the rest of the block, which is residential, single-family residential structures. Next slide. North of the site, you can see the Shell gas station. And then across the street, another view of the BP gas station and then Salvation Army building. South of that, here, we're looking southeast at the site. Next slide. And, you know, with that, I don't know if they've been able to make it on. I think they had a long Board of Adjustment meeting, but I do want to invite my colleagues in the zoning section, Mary Hart Burton and Evan Winkler, to add any any comments or kind of notes about the zoning cases of this petition.
Fair. We'll recognize Mary Hart if she's on.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we are in agreement with Miriam's proposal. I also want to add that regardless of the proposal at the site, we do think it's a good planning practice to rezone the parcel and allow them to consolidate because whatever kind of project happens here, it will need that consolidation if it's going to include that entire area.
Okay, thank you. And there was someone else you had, Miriam, that you wanted to acknowledge or?
Oh, it was Evan Winkler. If he, in addition to Mary, wanted to comment, but it sounds like Mary covered it for the team.
Okay, with that, as we mentioned, there is a public hearing for this. If you want to speak, please place your name and the organization you're speaking with. I see thumbs up from Evan Winkler. Thank you, Evelyn. If you want to speak, place your name in the chat and include your organization. While we're doing that, I will call entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, real quickly, Chair, we do have, I believe, representatives of the petitioner here with some information about their project. If if the Commission would like to hear that.
Well, I was good. That's why I was calling. Is there anyone else that we wanted to have speak at this?
My apologies. Yeah, that's who I suppose I did fight.
Who is the petitioner?
Let's see, I'm not sure.
Jane, Ms. Massfield. Chair recognizes Jamie Massfield. If you want to go ahead and introduce yourself with who you who you're with and go ahead and make whatever conversation comments you want to make at this.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Well, we'll see. We can hear you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. And of course, Miriam and Mary and Evan have just been, as always, phenomenal. And the whole presentation that they have made sums up perfectly what it is that we are going for and to, you know, to echo Mary's consideration about this, too. I will say that we are under contract with the seller for both of these parcels. So the where the current Telenia's is, but also the six one one zero Berthold Avenue, and they're owned by the same seller. So I echo again, you know, what Mary said about just good zoning practices in general to consolidate this anyway. Can I go to next slide, please? And my name is Jamie Mansfield, and I'm an attorney with Armstrong Teasdale, and I represent the applicant that's currently under contract at this site. Again, not not to, again, I'm gonna cruise through this because Miriam did a good job, and I know you guys have other things to get to, but yes, you know, that the current parking lot is a single-family dwelling zoning, and we are seeking to rezone that to F to match up to the current Telenia site that's on the corner of Berthold and Hampton. Next slide, please. Again, the the map, which she set out perfectly, the star just shows where the site currently is located and that parking lot along there. The red line denotes the current commercial use, even though of the A zoning next to the Berthold next residential property over there to the west. Next slide, please. Again, just as Miriam's Miriam showed here, too, this is the current zoning of that with the F neighborhood and then the current yellow, which again is being utilized currently as a commercial parking lot to that now vacant bar. Next slide. And again, the comprehensive plan and looking at that, too, just just echoing Miriam that this is fitting right there, aligned there into and just overall good zoning practices to make sure that that corner lot, like she mentioned, is all one parcel, which we already have lot consolidation and have been working with George Stock and Associates on getting that squared away as well. Hoping to make it through this rezone process with you all. Next slide, please. This is just current a current configuration, and it we are in no way, shape or form married to it whatsoever. We just kind of wanted to show an overlay of the project. A few things I wanted to point out is that there are those considerations that Miriam, Mary and Evan have raised about where the building is situated. This right here shows a it's a current mockup of what we typically use for our applicant who has other dispensaries. But at this site in particular, of important note, we are not seeking a drive-through at this site. So even though you can kind of see one here, that is not what we are seeking to make that abundantly clear. But we are completely amenable to working with staff on this where this building is situated, screening and landscaping. That is something that I, as you can see in the next slides, that my client prides itself on and ensuring that you have an aesthetically pleasing building that fits into the character of the neighborhood. So if you can move to the next slide. This is a general rendering of something that, you know, we have done. You know, again, you can move to the next slide is a a different color, different materials of that. Next slide. This is another possibility. Again, these are all just color renderings of things in different markets that we have in different municipalities that, you know, working with the city to come up with a design and look and feel to these sites that really fit into the character of the neighborhood. And, you know, very much looking forward to working with you guys on that. And then one final slide. A different angle of that building that we were, you know, again, a rendering and thinking and and by no means are we married to any particular thing and and look forward to working with staff. And the final slide, I believe, is maybe, and that wasn't on there, too, but it shows one of of the building set back a bit from the street angle. So I have available with me, you know, other members of our team, including our real estate brokers and including from the operational standpoint, too, happy to answer any questions. But first things first is this rezone of a site, which has been, you know, consistently used as a commercial parking lot. Deconsolidation to ensure that the compatibility of the entire site being zoned F commercial to move forward.
Right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jamie. With that, that is your the petitioner and representative. I would entertain a motion for and a public hearing, which is on the agenda.
So moved, Alderman Cone.
It's been moved by Alderman Cone.
Seconded by Garminia.
Second. Second, by Commissioner Garminia. With that, a call for previous roll. Any objections? Hearing no objections. The public hearing is open. If you're speaking at the public hearing, please place your name in the chat. At this time, we do not. I do not see any, and I will ensure that statement with the Planning Commission, if there are no public hearing comments in the chat.
We don't want previous roll because there were extensions.
Okay, thank you.
There's a quickly sort of one point of order and then also the person working the technology said that some people are chatting the P D A note directly, but really they should chat the chair to or or to speak up when the public hearing is open. But the point of order is that I don't think we can use previous roll, maybe because there were.
Want to continue to abstain.
Okay, so we can still use previous roll. If there was no objection to previous roll, then we would use previous roll. If they add an objection to their vote, then they would object.
So those. Thank you, Alderman Cone. So are there any objections to previous roll? And if I'm understanding from David, we can accept that with that.
We reflect that they have stayed again.
I, um, I would guess, I guess I object. Sorry, Alderman Cone.
Okay, with that, please call roll for please call the vote for previous roll. I mean, for opening the public hearing.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz. Commissioner Boaz.
Okay.
Sorry, I lost the call for a minute. Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Garminia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keong.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
And the motion passes with our present voting. Aye.
Okay, with that, the public hearing is now open. As again, I see no information on chat. I will defer to the staff at this point. We do not of those online that want to speak. At that point, please realize you have two minutes. We're asking that you be keep your statements to the positive and and or professional, let me say that. And respectful of that two minutes, I will call if any point anybody's over point. And staff, you will call upon your orders that you see, because I can't see them.
Yeah, I think what we're going to do is ask those interested in speaking during the public hearing to go ahead and and speak up.
Well, they first need, if you're going to speak, please identify your name and the organization you're with. And we would ask that you would turn your camera on if at all possible. I am not.
Let's see.
This is going to be first call for public hearing. Mr. Winkler, are you are you speaking? Is that? This is going to be second call for public hearing.
Hi, this is Rebecca Keen. Forgive me. I'm misunderstanding. Are we supposed to post in the general chat? Because that is not an option in the chat that I have available. I have a choice to message the Chair or the co-chair.
Okay, if you want to speak, go ahead. Identify yourself, and you have two minutes, ma'am.
I'm and I apologize. I am interested in speaking on the chapter ninety-nine item for thirty-four seventeen grade.
Okay.
I will wait till.
Okay, there is no public hearing on that item. We're right now. We're still on the thirty 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 twenty-three. So is there anybody that's wanting to speak?
I would like to. I would like to speak. I'm unmuted. My name is Claudia Joyce. I'm the owner of sixty-one eighteen Berthold Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Go ahead, please.
Okay, I have some questions. I'm wondering how many dispensaries are already in that area? I know that Dogtown has three, so I'm very curious about how many dispensaries there are there. Is that something that someone can address?
The. Okay, go ahead with your comments, please.
My next thing is where is this kind of this company from? Are they a local people? Have they been selected by the city as a minority business? I'm very curious about who they are and where they're coming from and who they represent. Are they from California? Are they? Where are they from? There's also, I'd like to say, a great deal of traffic already on Hampton. Our neighborhood is as quiet as it can be. But to add a dispensary there with a huge parking lot, no matter how nice that building looked, is probably not the best use of our neighborhood exterior lights. If you're going to put them up, would not sort of be the best thing for our neighborhood as well, because there's all lots and lights of light pollution already. My property is a rental property, so for me, it would be more difficult to say this is a lovely, quiet neighborhood, when in fact, you're going to put a huge business next to it. Also, as I sit, as this sits close to the zoo and the park, which is a family area, is this really a good choice for this kind of a facility? And I think that's all I really have to say, but I am very curious about how many dispensaries are already in the area, which was not addressed, and who these people are, where they come from. And if this is, I know the city had some sort of a a selection of local and business minority people. I would be interested to know if that's who's coming into this this place.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Joyce. I I will defer the question of Jamie Mansfield, who is a client on this. You I think you can address that best as a representative. You're muted, Jamie. Yeah, there you.
Thank you. And I just see Mary Hart Burton's hand up. I didn't know if that was jump in line to her addressing anything.
Mary, go ahead. Mary, speak if you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to comment that the license for dispensaries in the state of Missouri are actually issued by the state. And while I do not have the number of dispensaries in the city of St. Louis right here at my fingertips, I do know that you can go online at the State Health Department and see how many licenses have been issued. And we are happy to provide that information to the Commission.
Thank you, Mary. With that, I'll go back to Jamie, if you wanted just to speak speak of who your client is.
Thank you. And Ms. Joyce, to answer your question, my client is Good Day Farm. You could see it there on one of the buildings. They are a great company that operates other dispensaries here in the state of Missouri. They have two additional dispensaries that are already in the city, so they're very, you know, aware of, you know, the city and working with the city and ensuring that these are safe and and good and and tried and true dispensaries. They have been approved and vetted and background and promo checked by the state of Missouri. These guys are not affiliated with any microbusiness applications. That application actually just came out for D H S S to the state, and that is those licenses haven't even been issued or awarded yet through the lottery system. So that that is the name of my client. And, you know, again, we're we're very hopeful to be great residents as we are in the city currently and look forward to being at the site and and being a good, respectful neighbor to you.
Jamie, I understand. May I address you, please?
Just one. Thank you, Jamie. Ms. Ms. Joyce, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, so I guess you didn't really answer my question. Is this a local company? Is this company based in St. Louis? Is this company based in Missouri? Is I want I'm curious, you know, I'd be more inclined to feel comfortable if I knew I was supporting the tax base in Missouri and the tax base in the city rather than some California company or some Colorado company. I think that's what my question is, Jamie.
So so Good Day Farm here is it's it's actually based out of Arkansas. But it is very much here has a, you know, footprint in Missouri. They are an operator in Missouri. They employ many, many Missourians. In fact, the the whole way the system works and the way the regulations work, too, is that everything has to be Missouri grown, Missouri manufactured, all trade, all products, all jobs. Everything comes here out of of Missouri. It's a great program. I'm, you know, I'm more than happy to speak with you offline about the program and and what these guys do and who they are. And I know there'll be ample opportunity at the conditional use permit hearing to address some of these things and and not necessarily with respect to just kind of cleaning up the rezone here. But again, you know, as we move forward in time, I'm more than happy to put you in touch with them so you could see exactly who they are. But again, you know, as we move forward in time, I'm more than happy to put you in touch with them so you could see exactly who they are.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Here's what we're going to do. I'm going to allow the public to continue with their questions and we'll come back and answer them. And if there's any questions, we'll hear all the statements because I want to maintain that two-minute rule, not back and forth dialogue at this point. Are there any other public comments that somebody wants to make at this point? Call number one. Call number two for public hearing.
Seen at least from our end, two folks who want to submit additional public comment. One person named, I think, Renee. Do I have that right? Renee, are you here with us?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I am an owner at 6210 Crescent Avenue, just about a block away.
Please, Renee, state your, state your full name and your, and your position again.
Renee Paradowski, property owner.
Thank you.
I just wanted to voice my opinion on the concerns for crime. I know of other dispensaries that have been broken into several times due to the cash business. I'd like to know plans for that. I know a little bit of it was discussed, but obviously it can still happen. Also, to back up, I think it was Claudia, the issues with traffic on that part of Hampton, being so close to the highway. And I know personally from experience, turning right onto Hampton when you're facing east is difficult sometimes. The cars coming from the other direction will turn and you don't necessarily know that they're turning because you don't have a left turn as well. So it's a little confusing. And I know a lot of people who don't live right there understand it unless you do it every day. So that's a concern to me as well as the crime.
Okay, thank you. We recognize that your opinion concerned with crime and traffic. Miriam, any others that the staff recognizes? Because we're not, I'm not able to see any of them.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. At least one other with the name Messelra, I believe.
You can say that a lot, Scott.
Would that be Robert Messel you're seeing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I could not find a place to put my name on this. I'm on a different computer at my house. My wife and I are longtime residents of the adjacent street Crescent Avenue. And we've watched that problem property for 30-plus years. And it has been nothing but a neighborhood nuisance. And while we support the demolition of that derelict building, I'm concerned as Renee is about potential crime that it could create. I don't think the patrons will, but I think that this is going to be a target for thieves. The adjacent courtesy diner had a shooting months ago across the street of Namco late night. Both, all of these are late night. A clerk was killed just two weeks ago. And I think this is going to be a target for thieves and it's going to, it, it may be unalterable, but when they come there and can't find something, there's an alley going up the, the dividing that block between Crescent and Berthold. And I think it's going to be nothing but a problem for this neighborhood. And I'm concerned also about the impact. There, there are people going to Forest Park walking along here. I just don't think that it's the right thing for this, developing this otherwise very nice and desirable site.
Okay, go ahead. Any, any last statements, sir? All right. Thank you, Robert. So your concern was with nuisance of the lot itself, crime late night, an alley between Crescent and Berthold and foot traffic at Forest Park. With that, Miriam, any other public, any other comments from public at that point?
We don't see anybody else who wants to participate in the public hearing at this time.
Hi, this is David Asland. One more. I'm a resident at 6120 Berthold Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Asland, go ahead. You're recognized.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I would like to echo the previous comments of just being a nuisance property for many, many, many years. I'd also like to point out that here, hopefully in the next 10, 20, 30 years, the zoo will be about one block away as it extends north of or south of Highway 40. So thinking long term for this property as well, something that could be more family friendly, especially with the upcoming zoo expansion, would take my vote over something like this.
Okay, thank you very much. So again, you echoed the other comments and your concern is long term, 20, 30, 40 years or for zoo expansion and the nuisance property. With that, any other Miriam that you have at this point?
We don't, we don't see others on our.
Okay. All right, last call, one call for last comments. Second call for public hearing, third call for public hearing. Here none at this point. I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Alderman Cone.
Second, Commissioner Ken.
Okay. Been moved and moved to second it and called for previous role. Any objections? Hearing no objections at this point. Public hearing is now closed. With that, as the commission knows, at this point, I identified them individually, align them to have any questions for staff or the petitioner, beginning always with Alderman Cone. Any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have quite a few questions. I appreciate the comments and feedback from neighbors and the presentation from planning and the feedback from our zoning colleagues here. You know, I I guess my concerns or questions are around the potential site plan. You know, and then also, I guess, actually, starting off during the planning presentation, I thought it was mentioned that there was support from the neighborhood with respect to the plans for the site.
No, we haven't received any written comment and support. We, we have received three letters expressing concern, but I, which I'm very.
Okay, so is there, there's been no neighborhood organization or alderperson or anything like that that's, you know, expressed support for the project, the site, the, and the zoning matters before us today?
Tell me, it's just heard from, from the public and we haven't heard anything else.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything beyond what we heard in the public hearing and then the letters received and forwarded to commissioners.
Okay. And let me interject Alderman Cone, if I can. Who's the, the alderperson for this area?
I believe it's Brett Norahian.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized?
Just a moment. Alderman Cone, were you, were there other questions you wanted to address at this moment?
I mean, if Mary has something relative to the question that I just asked.
Okay, all right. I recognize Mary. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to report to the board that I did reach out to Alderman Narahan 20th of July, just as a courtesy that I do to every alderperson when I have a rezoning in their ward, and I have not heard back from him. So I'm just giving that information to the commission.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Alderman Cone, it's done. I spoke with Alderman Narayan today and he is aware of the, of our hearing tonight.
Okay, it just, it doesn't, okay. So the matter before us is, you know, pertaining to the zoning change and the consolidation of the two parcels. So we have you know, currently that, that site configuration is really problematic. You know, and I'm glad that we have the opportunity to have this discussion because Hampton, especially that stretch, but I mean, pretty much the entire stretch of Hampton was built in a very auto-centric manner, not very mindful of pedestrians whatsoever. You can see that even with the three-foot wide sidewalks that front Hampton for this parcel in particular, which can also attribute to some of the sightline issues that some of the residents were discussing earlier. So when we were going through the presentation, I think there were some recommendations that were discussed. You know, I'm, I'm very supportive of those. I would just want to be a little bit more specific. And also, is there a way to make them requirements versus considerations?
I'll defer to staff on that question. Or Mary, if.
So there's two parts here tonight. One, as you have said, Alderman Cone, the combining of the two parcels. And then when a specific use comes, there may be various aspects of needing a conditional use, such as this one does, which extends more options to for Mary's team and others to evaluate. What Miriam introduced at the beginning was in the resolution from the, from the Planning Commission for this action, you might include some of the things to be considered at the conditional use review that we would put in a letter.
But we can't put a requirement in there, Don, about you know, light pollution or you know, the setback from the street. So, you know, if there, I, I, you know, I'm very mindful that, you know, you know, even with the developments recently along Chippewa, some of the newer kind of strip mall-esque that are along the street versus setback from the street with a parking lot in front that have the points of egress behind the property instead of in front of the property. They kind of fit more into the urban fabric, if you will, but you know, is there a way, you know, in terms of, you know, this, you know, quote unquote considerations that are, you know, being made here, whether that's the building placement or setback for pedestrian use or you know, obviously, we want, you know, lighting for security purposes, but that lighting could be, you know, facing away from the housing and towards Hampton or the business instead of, you know, sending out light pollution into, you know, the residents that live adjacent to this parcel. Why, why would we not do requirements instead of considerations?
So let's do two things. One is we'll ask Mary to talk about just the general requirements in terms of setbacks that would reply, that would comply or apply in an F zoning district. Then the second thing is we'd go into, for instance, a general purpose marijuana dispensary. Its lighting is supposed to be internal to the parking lot only, which I would interpret to be very mindful of light pollution in the neighborhood. And then there are the other things that would come up during the conditional use part. But Mary, Evan, if you would just give a basic reminder of what curb cuts would be evaluated on and setbacks would be evaluated on for development of this corner.
Thank you, Don. I can answer that. So this is a particular instance where they're going to demolish the building. So when they go to build the new building, a thing called a building line survey would be required. And because they're the only thing on that block or the majority of what's on that block, the building line survey is going to come back to basically that they could build up to the street. So that answers the setback question. The other question that I wanted to address is, I think this is a perfect example of where the Planning Commission could direct the staff to write a memo such that the staff already writes to the Board of Adjustment when this does come to a conditional use hearing, and they can make recommendations to the site plan about things like pulling building up to the street front, putting the parking behind the building, doing the lighting, building the landscaping screen between the business and the neighboring residential property. All those things could be addressed and we would take that in to consideration at the conditional use hearing and attach those as conditions to the permit and recommend it to BPS. So I think there's a, an opportunity here for, and we also heard from the petitioner through the representative Jamie Mansfield, that they are more than willing to work with us on design aspects of the site plan. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I, so Mary, just to be clear, though, you said that like they could be required. They, with the sightline review, they could build up to the street, but.
Yes or no? They can't be required to do that through a rezoning because remember that in a rezoning, we're not talking about the building. We're talking about the land. But later on, when they do their building permit for the new construction, that's when the letter from the Planning Commission about recommendations to the site is very helpful.
Well, so I guess that then kind of leads me to, you know, my next question or comment, which is, you know, making these considerations more specific than with, I, I mean, specifically with regards to the curb cuts, you know, limiting the number of curb cuts, preventing curb cuts within, you know, let's say 30 feet of an intersection.
And your concern about curb cuts, but remember, I don't have jurisdiction over that. That will be handled by street department, but they will look at all that.
Well, but that would also be determined off of building placement too, which it sounds as though, you know, you all would have some jurisdiction over the building placement.
Well, I do believe that we could certainly work with the petitioner and particularly based on any recommendations that came out of the Planning Commission.
Right.
Yeah, we can make findings and recommendations, but not requirements.
Yeah.
So that would be our observations to that.
Yeah, I hear that.
I just want you to know that we would very seriously consider the Planning Commission's recommendations.
Right, so we, we, we can do that. As findings and recommendations that we're passing on to the Board of Aldermen regarding this. And then we've made another distinction is that in this particular use, they're going to be asking for something else that's discretionary, which is the, the this use, the conditional use, which will have another public hearing. And then that will be decided in front of the Board of Public Service and Rich is, you know, on a member of the Planning Commission to be able to carry forward comments and whatnot that he's heard from here.
Yes.
So the short answer would be, I would recommend that as you, as we see this, we know this is a corner. We know it's a commercial street that's Hampton. There's two parcels to be joined in one zoning category that we could add to that a series of recommendations to the site plan reviewers. And then also the, the conditional use process would go through its own process.
Yeah, I, I hear all of that. So why, what is the, what's the limitation on us being more specific in those considerations? So if we say vehicular access management to limit curb cuts along Hampton to a maximum of two curb cuts, what, what's, why, why wouldn't we be able to do that? Or saying building placement near the corner of Berthold and Hampton avenues with a minimum of eight feet of sidewalk permitted. Why, why would we not like be more specific in the considerations that we are recommending?
So one of the things is, I think Mary spoke about the curb cuts of the.
Yes, and Rich is on here. Rich is on Board of Public Service. There would be conditional use decided by the Board of Public Service. They would take into consideration the recommendations of the Planning Commission. What I'm asking is why wouldn't the Planning Commission and our recommendations be more specific?
The question, let me, let me ask a question to support Alderman Cone's concern here. The planning right now, that first lot on Hampton is not our consideration. And I'm, our consideration is the lot on Berthold. Are we rezoning that lot? Regardless, and I think the question, the challenges regardless of what goes there, and I think Mary said this earlier, we're not considering the business entity. We're reconsidering the lot usage, the classification of that lot. Am I not correct with the staff on that one?
That's correct. And quickly, with the question about specificity, yeah, I think we haven't drafted this letter yet. I, I think we have just listed those themes for Planning Commission discussion. I think a letter could be made more specific. There, I don't see.
As recommendations in general, not requirements for things as, as Mary says, and under the jurisdiction of something other than zoning.
I just want to let Renee know, we, I do see your hand. However, we are, we are now in the Commisional Meeting. The public hearing has now been closed, so I'm not ignoring you, but at this point, it is, is. But at this point, it is, is to the commissioners to have their questions. So I return back to Alderman Cohn right, right now at this point.
Okay, so I mean, it sounds as though my question was answered and that we can be more specific in the letter that is sent, that is drafted by staff. So these are just general, you know, considerations for discussion this evening, which is what we are doing right now. And what I am trying to share with you all is my thoughts here, but Lord have mercy, help us all. I, I I would just.
So this, Alderman, this is a layer cake. And so as we're talking about these two parcels that have been used in a commercial way, but one's been not zoned commercially, combining them, that's the first layer. There's the other standards that go for constructing the building. And then the use and a discretion that comes along with the conditional use is also in the future for this particular applicant. And we can make various recommendations in our communication of our recommendation regarding the zoning. For consideration.
All right, Alderman Cohn, any other comments before I move on? Alderwoman.
I've been speaking. I don't know if someone muted me or not, but so Don, I, I hear that. What I was trying to convey is that I would like to have more specific, more specifics in those considerations that are provided in the letter drafted by your staff that are then provided to the Board of Public Service and zoning when they go through those considerations.
Remember, we're, we're not amending the overall zoning code here with having you step back requirements.
Don, I'm not trying to rehash any of that, man. I am, you, there is a slide in the presentation deck that lists considerations.
Yes, and I'm saying.
Your staff has said that they can be more specific with those considerations when they draft the letter that will then be used in subsequent processes here.
We haven't agreed that.
Chair, 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 the chair takes. Don, how do we, when do we draft this letter that I think Alderman Cohn is asking? Where does that come in place that we make these recommendations?
We're giving, the Planning Commission is giving a recommendation regarding the conversion of this parcel to F. There will still be two parcels at this site. So making, giving us some, some feedback to put as recommendations that aren't at a per square foot or real precise thing is what we're entertaining for us to have digested in making the letter. And communicate that down line.
I'll, I'll add that the specific authority and ordinance that we're referencing here is, you know, the, the Planning Commission or delegated to PDA staff has 45 days following submission of the conditional use permit application to provide this letter. So that would be the time at which we, you know, specifically would submit a letter.
So if I'm hearing, then if we want to make these recommendations, i.e. that Alderman Cohn suggests, and some of us agree with, we would send those recommendations to you. You would draft that letter. And prior to it going out, we would then next 30 days in our next meeting, agree on that conditional letter to be signed by the Planning Commission. Is that what I'm understanding?
That has not occurred before.
I understand it hasn't occurred before, but Mary, would you entertain?
So, so, so two things, remember, we're, we're acting on a zoning item tonight.
Yes.
We know if this particular use continues on the site once rezoned, there'll be a conditional use, which is a separate thing. But one of the letters we're authorized to write is when that conditional use comes before and is heard, we can, we're, we're free to write a letter to the, to the overseers of the conditional use process. That would be a second step, but I think what we want to have from the Planning Commission tonight is responding back to Miriam's part in, in the presentation. There are some things we ought to consider. You ought to make a recommendation to us, include that in a resolution. We'll draft it in a letter recommending the zoning change and we'll have it in our hip pocket to also include when and if a conditional use permit request comes for the site.
So now would be the time that we would have that discussion so that when we make the motion to pass this, that that's adopted into the resolution that's then shared later.
Good point. It may not all be appropriate for the current task, but it would be a reminder that we've digested as a Planning Commission, not because there's a conditional use request in front of you, but in anticipation of that conditional use application, we'll have some things in the record.
So when does that occur?
When somebody makes a motion here tonight. Give us some general parameters and we'll convert them as staff.
Mary, Chair recognizes Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to just suggest that maybe you would let the zoning and the PDA staff get together and come up with some recommendations on the site plan and what the requirements might be, and we could share that with the Planning Commission at a future meeting or however PDA staffs would prefer that.
So Miriam will, will remind the Commission that we are on a clock because of this being a petition to make a recommendation, but I think she's done the math. And if she would explain that, we'll tell you what we have in terms of freedom of coming back, meaning coming back to the Planning Commission during the allowed days.
So we could, you know, continue the discussion on this rezoning item to fully get those specifics on the record as part of this Planning Commission deliberation. I think that's one scenario. So, you know, we could return to this next month. Another scenario is, you know, the, I, I believe, I'm kind of looking to Don and David and others. I think another scenario is that the Commission could direct us to develop this letter and then vote on, on the rezoning tonight, and then we could come back outside of this item with the specifics drafted for you all to review.
And this is not the first time we've had these conversations. And I'm, I'm fully agreement with, with Alderman Cohn that there are conditions that we want to recommend. And we do recommend, recognize that the zoning is separate from our condition that we want to recognize. We recognize those are two different entities, but we need to know when do we active as a body make those official recommendations?
Yeah, those official recommendations would be, you know, accepted after submission of the conditional use permit process. I, I think there could also be a, I don't know, more of a discussion before with the applicant to talk these things through.
Okay, I return Alderman Cohn. Thank you.
It seems to me as though we have enough time for PDA and zoning to work with the applicant to have a more firm plan in place to present before we take a, a vote on this resolution. I, that would be my preference at this juncture. Just so that we have a little bit more clarity before moving forward in this process and so that the neighbors have more clarity as we go through this process as well.
So Miriam, will you recount the, the math for our next meeting? I.e. we have time.
Yes, so we have 60 days.
Expire when?
Yes, we have 60 days following the receipt of a rezoning petition to take it up. Our next regularly scheduled meeting would fall comfortably within those 60 days.
So Alderman Cohn, there's, there's procedural and time room to do that before the next meeting without breaking any protocols.
Sounds delightful.
Thank you, Alderman Cohn, Alderman, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. If you still.
Right, because now I guess my questions, I really could save them. But I, I will, I did have a question about, does anybody know what neighborhood this is? I was trying to find it. Because I know I received some emails. I know we have the neighbors on today, but I was just trying to see for my own clarity what neighborhood this was. I definitely was going to be in support of the good zoning practices. Work that we were going to be able to do here today, but I do share some of the same concerns as my colleague and was going to be very, try to help as much as I can and engaging in the conditional piece of it, so. Just need to know what the neighborhood is so I can be aware of that and will be hopefully hearing from not only my colleague, Alderman Orion, but others. And then I wait for us to move forward on this. It sounds like we're not going to be taking a vote today.
Thank you.
Clayton Tam neighborhood.
So Trister, that, that's the Clayton Tam neighborhood. As we go down this continuum of, of this and, and, and hearing and expressing our, our observations and thoughts, there are various stages, of course. What happens at, at Planning Commission, the zoning action at the Board of Alderman to change the map, the map stays in that thing. And then there's always the, the staff review and responsibilities for site plans and those type of things. Typically, we don't do the details in the public meeting of the site plan, but this will be advisory to summing our comments and passing along and getting you a chance to see what it is next month.
Okay. Commissioner Boas, any, I'm sorry, any more, any more Alderwoman Clark, I'm sorry, Commissioner Boas.
No additional questions. I support, I look forward to Alderman Cohn's motion.
Okay, Commissioner Bradley.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, and I think I am. No matter what development, regardless of this particular development or any development that would utilize these parcels, we would need to go through this process and rezone it as proposed, correct?
Yes. Any development now combining these two, two properties, as Mary said, you know, habit had it that the parking lot was going on both of these parcels, but they had not been rezoned to matching zoning districts in prior history. So yes.
And generally, the next question is generally any development that would go on to these parcels after they are rezoned will require a conditional use through zoning and BPS, correct?
If it is a.
It's not permit.
Yeah, Scott, would you flip back to that slide with that describes what would be allowed in the F district?
Okay, so there are some uses that would not allow conditional use, but this particular use development would, correct?
That's right. So if it were a grocery store, it would not go through the
Okay.
Process, but would, yep, yep.
Right, but, but again, this particular use, this is what I'm trying to say, this particular use being a dispensary will require a conditional use through zoning and BPS.
Yes.
Along with if it was to return to be a bar or tavern.
Right, okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Anderson.
No questions at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gormedia.
I, thank you, Commissioner Bradley, for your comments. I, I'm in agreement with, I feel like we could do the vote today. I don't see a scenario where this particular parcel would ever return to being its actual zone juice, which is residential. And that it is more appropriate as a commercial, neighborhood, commercial zone, and also you need that extra parcel to really have a safe egress and access. I don't know, I, I would like to have the Streets Department obviously give their advice on how to make this parcel safe for both pedestrians and visitors to the site. And in terms of where the building, the building placement would be optimal, whether it would be further setback on the property or right up at the edge where the current building is, but I think regardless of those, like the building design and site design decisions, like the parcel needs to be rezoned. And I agree with the rezoning to match what apparently it's been used as for God knows how long. I don't think that was part of the presentation, how long it's been part of the parking lot of the previous restaurant that was here, but I, I think, you know, I'd be ready to vote on this today, but I'm happy to vote on it at the next meeting for the, for the rezoning of this property.
I'll, I'll just jump in as, as Miriam's put the slide back up. Is the good point for what you've made and what Richards talked about is the ones without the asterisk just get to be able to be on the F zone use and comply with other regulations regarding design and, and safety. Any one of the uses that has an asterisk here, including this one, would then go through the conditional use process in addition.
Yeah, and it, on the parking lot, as far back as Google Maps will take us, it has been a parking lot, which is the mid 90s, so probably before that as well.
Thank you for that history. Yeah, so I don't have questions. I do appreciate Alderman Cohn's getting clarification on like what are, what is our purview or what are we allowed to do to inform the next stage of the process? So I appreciate his, his persistence. But yeah, I don't have any further questions and I support this project and the use of, of it for this use. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Keong.
Thank you. Similar to Christina and Rich, I do, I would be comfortable zoning today on the rezoning, but in terms of what the use is, it sounds like, you know, there's limitations what Planning Commissioners have say and don't have say in that process, but I, regardless if this project does move forward to request and go through the conditional use hearing, there are engagement with the neighborhood that sounds like has not occurred enough. Like, for example, I don't think we've actually addressed and answered the question around security for the site that was raised today, so there are questions I have as well as that didn't move forward as a marijuana dispensary that I think should be answered. So everyone makes an informed decision, but not necessarily additional new comments to add, but Don, just for clarity, if we as commissioners have ideas about what we would like to see be a requirement, should we be reaching out to the planning staff to have follow-up conversations if this gets on hold for next month's meeting?
So two things. Yes, mindful of the list behind us with the asterisk is, is the, if we rezone to, to consolidate these two parcels, then it'll be a larger F parcel and other, and, and Mary and site plan type of stuff will, will come into play. And it's only if one of the ones with the asterisk goes forward to doing a conditional use or needing a conditional use that that whole other mechanism is, is concerned.
I think one potential path is that we receive Commissioner thoughts and comments or have a conversation. I think another is that, like Mary said, we could work on drafting something together and circulate for Commissioner review.
Because one of the key things that Mary pointed out, every site has some type of aspect. For instance, she talked about the setback being requirement as the building line, but this might have a, a different component to it. Those would be things as we're brainstorming and feeding and looking at the feedback you've given us that we tire kick a little bit to see whether, how they, just to see whether it conflicts with other regulations. Love the advice, but we want to make sure we're, we're checking it twice.
Any further comments, Commissioner Keong? Okay, as I wrap up, there are two, we are, our purview, our charge is to zone this lot, as we spoke earlier, and I'm not diminishing anybody's concern to that. It is, this lot is, is zoned as one, was an F. And it's currently zone A and they're asking for F. Regardless of the use of that space, our charge is to, to zone. Our charge is to to zone correctly. And the second question that I'm hearing Commissioner saying. If we want to make recommendations, not contingent on our approval. But recommendations for that land, how do we make that happen? And when does that happen? Uh, because we will send it, you know, we'll either approve or deny it. And that's it, but we want to make recommendations as to what some of the um, some of the site plans may be, some of the street curves or whatever the other. Entities are, we, what is the mechanism for us as a commission to make that regardless of our zoning vote?
Well, they they go hand in hand. We're not coming out of the blue for for this, so I think in summary, it's good. A number of you and Alderman Cohen made observations and concerns about, you know, it being on this site. And we've been thinking about those. Uh, you you're, you should make a motion that includes that. Some for instances of FYI to the, excuse me, instructions to staff. Would you consider and work on this between now and the next meeting? Uh, and if you later want to send us an email as a as an individual to contribute, we'll digest all that and come back to you next time.
Having yet approved the zoning change. Or not, or holding it to the next meeting, is that what I'm trying to?
President?
I'm I'm gonna let, go ahead.
Both are options. Um, it could either be held to the next meeting, so we could continue this discussion and lock in a letter. Um, before the rezoning vote or the rezoning vote could occur. And we could continue drafting that letter and bring it back to the commission for discussion and review.
So either is an option is what I'm understanding.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, okay. With that, all questions have been, all commissioners have been questioned and answered. Uh, at that point, I would entertain a motion from a commissioner that wants to make the appropriate the action.
Mr. Chair, it's Alderman Cohen. I would make the motion that we hold the resolution until the next meeting and allow planning and zoning and the applicant to work together. On updating their plan and working through some of the. Things that were raised during today's hearing so that we. A better scope. For both ourselves and the neighbors engaged in this discussion for the next hearing.
I want to be sure the staff was able to identify his his motion. Because you were breaking, just so you know, Alderman Cohen, you were breaking up verbally. We weren't able to hear the hundred percent.
I can generally read Alderman Cohen's mind, so I think we filled in the gaps.
There, would there be a second?
Um, second?
Who seconded?
Commissioner Boas.
Thank you. I have a, I have a mo- a motion by Commissioner Cohen, second by uh Commissioner Boas. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Cohen?
No. I'm just kidding. Yes, I.
Continue, please.
Hi.
Commissioner Boas?
Hi.
Commissioner Bradley?
Hi.
Commissioner Anderson?
Hi.
Commissioner Garmidia?
Uh, I'm gonna say no, cause Alderman Cohen didn't put himself to do any work between now and the next meeting. No.
Commissioner Garmi- uh Commissioner Kyong?
Aye.
Chair Strider?
Epstein.
And the motion passes with six voting aye and one no, one abstention.
Thank you.
Okay, so with, let's hold on a second. Uh, I think we've got to recognize that one commissioner has joined us since the roll call. Get the math? Did you just say that we had six? Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, we're on, yes. Yeah, the only commissioner that is currently absent is Commissioner Benton. All right, with that, so we will.
I'm gonna make a point. If we talked about this at staff, if Commissioner Banton was here, this would be very much a discussion he would be having with us. Does uh, it is, yes, I would say that indeed uh would would have incurred. Um, I'm going to ask for clarity and might refer back to Alderman Cohen. To make it so we officially, we know very well what the motion was that was just voted on with that vote, so. So if we could just have a, Shane, if you could repeat that, it'd be helpful.
I, am I clear? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion was to have planning, zoning and the applicant. Work together to review the plans and update, you know, their plans according to the discussion that happened this evening. You know, taking into consideration, you know, the considerations and also the uh feedback from neighbors. Or the concerns of neighbors so that they can present those to us next month. Um, and we'll have greater awareness um relative to the plans moving forward.
And I'll just interject as I slid down and talked to David. So what you're doing as a commission is holding, is all those things.
Yeah, my motion was to hold, sorry, Don, yeah, that my my motion was to hold until next meeting. And allow PDA and all of them to basically do what I just said.
Back next month with more specifics and ideas for your review before a decision.
Cool, great. So.
All right, let's, this horse has been abused.
One one more thing before Miriam sits down. Uh, we want to get before the commission to know that there are three written uh. Mention and just give a general summary of those.
Yeah, so quickly, I mentioned.
She did, yes, she did already.
So with expressing concern, similar to the concern expressed during the public hearing. Um, that I think focused on the specific use of a marijuana dispensary as not the highest and best use of this site. Um, I I think it's fair to characterize the letters as non-expressing concern about. The possibility of redevelopment at the site, but um just a priority that it um. Would be its highest and best use and that it doesn't contribute to more kind of. Challenges for pedestrians and walkability in the neighborhood.
And therefore we'll have in the file their names and their addresses, which is what we normally would ask for, okay, fair enough.
Yes, that was from Morgan Ga- Guile, uh Alex Dake and Andy Weber. Those letters that were earlier mentioned. Uh, with that, the second item on the agenda.
So I'm gonna make one comment before we move on. Thank you. I mean, we've had a lot of discussion. The one of the things we have heard is, of course, the time, so we we do have time. Yeah, so I I you did the right thing in terms of making the motion to hold. If I was authorized to to send a letter. I wouldn't, meaning the letter that would go officially to the Board of Alderman, I would have held that to the next meeting, but this is the proper way to do it, so thanks.
Right, Miriam.
Great. Okay, so um this is our second action item and it involves review of a chapter ninety nine bliding study and redevelopment plan. Um, and then just a a quick moment of context about. This type of item before the planning commission, because I think there are members of the the public um joining um on this item and who have questions, so. Um, redevelopment plans, chapter ninety nines specifically are um. First considered by resolution at the land clearance for redevelopment authority, and so that board has already reviewed this and acted on it. And that is why it's before the planning commission tonight, so. Uh, the planning commission's specific review for items like this is whether the um the redevelopment plan itself is consistent with other plans such as the comprehensive plan. So that is um the focus of the planning commission tonight. I just wanted to provide that context, so. LCR A is staffed by our colleagues at the St. Louis Development Corporation. Um, Zach Wilson with SLDC, the Vice President for Incentives, is on the line tonight and able to answer questions about that side of this item. Um. But uh kind of in a way similar to uh zoning items, we have a clock under which we review items like this, so. It was sent to us after the LCR A's um vote uh last week. And we have, or the planning commission has thirty days in which to take it up, so that's why it's on the agenda tonight. Um, and I I think the chair mentioned there is no uh formal public hearing, there there is no public hearing as part of this item tonight, but. Have a presentation, um Zach with us on the line to answer questions as well as the proposed uh redeveloper of this site also on the line, able to answer questions about. Um, his plans for the project. So just a, that was kind of a quick bit of context about um what this is and why it's here tonight. So um this item is, as I mentioned, review of a chapter ninety nine bliding study and redevelopment plan. For one large parcel, you can see it's really a full city block in the Tower Grove South neighborhood at thirty four seventeen Grace Avenue, and this is. Of course, the old Fanning Middle School, which closed in twenty twenty one. The plan uh provides for kind of two scenarios, one in which low income housing tax credits are used and um. Projects in that scenario would be eligible for up to ten years of tax abatement at ninety percent of the um increment of uh improvements and then five years at fifty percent. And the non-Litec scenario, still an eligible use, but the plan proposes um up to ten years at seventy five percent tax abatement, and there's no use of eminent domain here. Next slide. So again, I want to provide a little bit of context about this site and its location in the Tower of South neighborhood, so. Just a block west of Grand Boulevard, which has a seventy bus line, um which is a, you know, pretty high frequency, high capacity bus line in our system. Uh, close to the Carpenter Branch, St. Louis Public Library within walking distance of Schnucks and Aldi. And bounded specifically by McDonald, Fairview, Giles and Grace avenues. Next slide, please. So here are a couple of pictures of the property itself, one looking west, the top one's looking west and one uh the bottom image looking northeast at the property. The site lies just south of the historic district in the neighborhood, but the site is listed in the National Register of Historic Places. And it also lies within a preservation review district.
Miriam, are those pictures that you took or were provided by LCR A?
Uh, these are pictures we took. So the prospective redevelopers is Screaming Eagle Development and proposes renovating the school to include sixty two apartments. And you can see kind of the proposed mix as part of that project. Forty three of the sixty two units would be affordable to households with incomes at eighty percent of the area median income. And then nineteen affordable at fifty percent of the area median income. Next slide. So as as we always do, we look at um the redevelopment plan for its consistent consistency with our comprehensive plan, which. Includes primarily the strategic land use plans, the land use elements. Of our comprehensive plan authority. Uh, there is no uh neighborhood plan in this area. Um, but under the strategic land use plan, you can see it was previously designated as an institutional preservation and development area. Like all schools, uh active schools in the city, that would be. The the designation placed at the time the site was a school. And when an institutional use is removed, um. We uh as as a policy use the adjacent designation, and in this case, that's the neighborhood preservation area, so all of those yellow areas. Fall under this neighborhood preservation area intent, and that is described as you see on the slide, so. Um, areas where existing housing and corner commercial building stock will be preserved and augmented, so on. Um, also included in this intent is, you know, continued preservation and improvement, quality rehabilitation. And so um you can see that the rea- rehabilitation of a historic school building is very much in keeping with that intent. Expressed in the neighborhood preservation area of the strategic land use plan. Next slide. So before inviting Commissioner questions, I just want to provide a brief tour of the site. On the top there, you can see the site in context and sort of a bird's eye view. Just a like, like we mentioned, a block west of Grand, um a picture of the subject site below. Uh, and to to be fair, that was, uh, Google helped us out. You can see without the foliage on the trees. A little bit better, the facade of the historic school building. Next slide. A picture of the subject site looking northeast again, and then on the bottom of the slide. Um, a little bit of the neighborhood context just east of the site, so. Right across the street, you can see the character of the Tower of South neighborhood, a mix of um, you know, two family buildings, four family buildings, um, single family buildings. It's very much typical of of that neighborhood. Next slide. Subject site um looking from the north south at the building. And then at the bottom, a little bit more neighborhood context, just southwest of the subject site. Next slide. And then here are some images of South Grand Boulevard, um, the portion of which is closest to. Uh, the subject area here, so in the top looking south, you can see. A mix of residential buildings on the west side of the street and then on the east side, just a little bit out of frame is the St. Louis Public Library Carpenter Branch. And then looking north, again, on South Grand, the bottom image. Um, and Google helping us out because standing in the middle of Grand is maybe not a a best practice for taking a picture. You can see a a mix of historic buildings there on the west side of the street and then the uh Schnucks, South City Schnucks there on the right. Next slide. That concludes my presentation.
And Miriam, there there are two people that are able to participate in this uh that are in the audience. Uh, they may have brought others with them, but uh. Zach, of course, is with SLDC and LCR A. They're the entity that has prepared this plan and is bringing it to us. Uh, and then the the representative from Screaming Eagle Development is the one that put forth to uh LCR A the desire to uh. Redevelop and have the blessing and will redevelop and plan to help him with this, so.
And who is the representative from uh Screaming Eagle?
Yeah, it's Mr. Matt Masiel or Amazal. I apologize, not sure about the pronunciation.
All right, so the chair recognized Zach first and any comments or statements you want to make first.
No, thank you for having Zach Wilson with SLDC. Uh, this is no different than we've done many of these single site uh vacant school, chapter ninety nines in the past. Sherman School in Shaw, Lion School in Crondelette, Clark School in Academy. Alafia School in um Sular and Webster School in Old North. All vacant schools that in convert to housing, so this is a very similar chapter ninety nine. Be happy answering any questions you have.
Hey, if you want to introduce the developer, we'll hear any comments that he he wants to make, he and his team. So Matt, yeah, go ahead, Matt.
I wasn't sure if you were supposed to introduce me, so I apologize for the delay. Uh, thank you, uh Chairman. Um, like I said, Matt Masiel, Screaming Eagle Development. Um, we've been developing properties. Yeah, in the city of St. Louis since uh twenty seventeen. This would be our third uh school rehabilitation. As Zach mentioned, we did Lion School, uh and then we did a school in um University City called Hawthorne Elementary. We've converted to multifamily as well. Is as part of this project, we are uh pursuing low income housing tax credits and providing some affordability for the neighborhood. Um, as mentioned, we are doing nineteen units as uh fifty percent of AMI. And the remaining units uh is workforce housing. Happy to answer any questions, um, you know, just kind of working through the process here as as we. See the development.
Okay, so stand by, cause I'm sure you will have some at some point. Uh, the chairs, I normally do recognize the commission and beginning with Alderman Cohen, uh any questions or comments, Alderman Cohen? You're muted if you're speaking.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Auto Woman Clark Hubbard?
No questions, thank you.
Alderman, uh Commissioner Boas?
No questions, looks like a great project.
Commissioner Bradley?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Garmidia? Commissioner Garmendia?
Yes, just one question. Um, the L C R A provided approval of a tax abatement under two conditions. Um, and it sounds like you're pursuing the Litec, but, um, I didn't know if S L D C could speak to whether it's, um, unusual to, for L C R A to be, uh, to have the provision in case Litec is not received?
Uh, we, that process is, uh, the Litec process is very competitive. Uh, a lot of times applicants, um, apply two or three times before they get the Litec, so it could be years. So we kind of weighed that if, if the developer would like to pursue eighty percent AMI housing there, after it fails, it lets receive Litec once or twice, they still have the option to develop that property with tax abatement. That's why we gave the option there. We're more concerned about getting the property on the tax rolls as quickly as possible.
Okay, and has that been done for any of the other school redevelopments that provision?
We've, um, included that, uh, the language in other chapter 99s, uh, depends on the location. I believe we did that in the Kingsway, uh, north of Delmore, and I think that we did, might have done that in Touchdown also.
Okay, um, yeah, I think that was the extent of, um, my questions, uh, for this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kellen?
No question.
Thank you. The chair has no questions with that. Uh, I would defer back to Miriam if you would read the, the staff's recommendation.
And I, I do want to acknowledge, um, I, I was just letting know several people online have, uh, requested to speak. When we review these items, it does not involve a public hearing. Um, but I did want to acknowledge that the public hearing, uh, in this process will be at the Board of Aldermen.
That is correct.
So, um, these are comments and a recommendation that, um, this redevelopment area is found to be declared as blighted and the proposed redevelopment plan in conformity with the strategic land use plan and the neighborhood preservation area designation specifically. And we do recommend approval, um, in the planning commission's role in this process of the proposed redevelopment plan.
Thank you. I'm going to entertain a motion from the commissioners. Alright, hearing no. No most, no.
I'm, I'm moved, but we adopt the, the plan.
Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Boaz.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Boaz. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Cohen?
Aye.
Auto Woman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia?
Aye.
Commissioner Keong?
Aye.
Chair Strider?
Aye.
Motion passes without present voting aye.
Thank you. Uh, with that, those are our two action items. Is, no, there's one more. No, I'm sorry, there is one more. Yeah. Okay, it's yours.
Good evening, commissioners. So last review is a request for public hearing for sloop amendment number twenty-five. Next slide, please. Which will take just a deeper dive into the proposed land use changes that were in the Wika Lab neighborhood plan, which was recently adopted at the June Planning Commission. Next slide. Um, just to kind of remind you all that in the plan, these were the focus areas, and within some of the focus areas, there were some proposed land use changes, which will kind of go more into depth at a future planning commission meeting. So tonight, we're just asking for an approval of that request. Next slide. And this is also just a reminder that if you take a look at the collab plan, you can see now where we are recommending those land use changes. Last slide. And so we are just seeking, um, approval in order to host a presentation in a public hearing at a future planning commission for those sloop changes, which would be an, an amendment number twenty-five. That's it.
Okay, with that, I think it's safe for me not to go for questions. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I can't believe you all wouldn't let me make the motion.
Let's back up, because who made the motion?
Actually, I didn't really make a motion, so, uh, Commissioner Garmendia.
No.
I don't know. It sounded like Commissioner, uh, Alderman Clark Hubbard made the motion and Christina made the second.
So Auto Woman Clark Hubbard made the motion. Who made the second?
Christina.
Chris, Chris, Commissioner Garmendia, call for vote.
Previous roll.
Here, thank you. Here, previous roll. Here, any objections? Hearing no objections is a motion for that they can begin the presentation in public hearing scheduling for the next commission meeting. Yes. Very good. Thank you. With that, uh, I will turn it over at this point to Don for any executive, uh, reports or items that he wants to go through.
Thank you. Uh, I think we all could recognize that just about three or four minutes ago, there was the longest silence during any planning commission meeting I've been to. A few things I want to report on as we're in August. I'll give you a tease and say that a new director of sustainability has been hired, and the start date is next Monday. So that's terrific. Uh, the person occupying the position will be in the category of a city planning executive, and will take on the mantle of the, uh, sustainability director and the task and, uh, contemporary type of things that we need our city to be working on. So that's pretty, pretty terrific. Glad to see that. Uh, want to talk to you a little bit about the planning commission's schedule. We may have talked about knowing that we just had Wika Lab here, uh, and that next from for the parties that are out there, uh, with us and partnering with us to do neighborhood plans. Uh, Project Connect was set up to be coming in mid-fall to, to, to late fall. That has now been revised by the Project Connect team at S L D C, and it will now roll over into mid-two thousand twenty-four as the completion of that plan to come to the planning commission. Uh, so make you aware of that, that that is going on as, as a, a change in your schedule and a change in some of the workloads and, uh, getting the resources to help with that project is something that's on S L D C's plate. Uh, and of course, Jonathan is continuing to help out with that as the, uh, city planning executive in charge of neighborhood planning. With that, I want to make a mo- make a, a commitment that at upcoming planning commission meetings at this time, uh, we're going to give you an update on neighborhood planning. Uh, because, uh, as you know, uh, you have blessed, um, number of our, our reports and background pieces of information. The, uh, areas that we propose to go to next in, in a rough category. Uh, the Cecilia's flow chart for how we would be conducting these things, and also the white papers and the status and reports on neighborhood planning are things that we brought to you in the past. Uh, we'll continue if we need to make changes to those, bring those to you in the future. But Jonathan will start to give you an update, uh, at every planning commission month. Next month, uh, Miriam will be bringing to you, uh, the fact, an update on the strategic land use plan. And why this is going to be a kickoff is, in particular, because as we mentioned some things tonight, uh, what's in relevance in our planning activities. The strategic land use plan, as basic as it is, is the framework and groundwork that we've had for, for a number of years. We have just executed a contract, uh, using, uh, city funds allocated to PDA's budget. It's a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar contract, uh, and it will be, uh, now performed by Interboro Consultants and a team. Uh, they have offices in Detroit and Brooklyn, and we're pretty confident that with this and this motion going forward of about a sixteen-month, fourteen to sixteen-month contract, uh, that Miriam will be supervising. And my punchline to that is it's, it's organized to be updating the St. Louis with the strategic land use plan, uh, but we're going to include in that, uh, best practices and other things that we should be considering and moving the city along in terms of the planning and our planning roles, responsibilities, and opportunities. Those things will include such things as relooking at the conditional use categories in the strategic land use plan. Relooking at the opportunity area we have in the land use plan. And more importantly, thinking about other things that should be in an adopted citywide plan under state law, uh, where we might want to include and should include things like the Economic Justice Action Plan characteristics. So, stay tuned. We've hired that consultant. Uh, Miriam and I have had our first preliminary meetings with them. They'll be here in, uh, in September, and they will be participating in a presentation to you at the September meeting. So, a few things to update you on, uh, and kind of excited on all those things happening. Any questions? And thank you to, uh, the two members of the select, those members of the selection committee, uh, that's on the planning commission in, uh, reviewing the applications, uh, for this work, uh, and selecting the, the, uh, the firm that we did. Uh, that means Miriam and I get the task of telling the folks that didn't get selected no. So with that, I'll end unless there's any questions or comments. And the floor is back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let me thank the public for those that are still on for their patience and their time with us. Uh, is always important for us to have community engaged in our process. I always thank the commissioners for their time, no matter what it is, short or long. We engage in good conversations and come up with good plans. I think the city is better for having you, uh, than not. So thank you for that. With that, I'll entertain a motion to just, uh, close the meeting.
I'm moved.
It's been moved a second, no need for vote. Thank you, everyone. Have a safe week, and we will see you in the next, uh, thirty days or so once, uh, and have a safe Labor Day holiday, because that comes between now and then. So thank you very much.